Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Joint Public Hearing on the Joint Committees on Housing, Water and Land and Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. We are in room 329. It is 2:02 on Monday, April 1st. We have two very non-controversial items on our agenda today, so I think we'll be fast. Just kidding. We do have two items on the agenda. Before I open it up to testimony, I'm just going to read some quick housekeeping notes here. Because we did have about 450 pages of testimony, I think we'll have a fair amount of testifiers here and on Zoom, so we will be instituting a two-minute time limit per testifier. Please, for those of you on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify and after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note the House is not responsible for any bad Internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. That said, the first item on our agenda is SB 3202 relating to urban development. And this bill as written would allow for two ADUs on all residential lots within the urban state land use district. It further clarifies that counties can reject permits due to a lack of infrastructure. The bill clarifies that the counties still retain full regulatory authority to impose size, height, set back restrictions on the development of those units, and can reject development that doesn't comply with those standards. The bill would also require that HOAs can't be more restrictive than those two allowed ADUs. The bill would also change the structure of impact fees so that impact fees are charged per square foot instead of per unit, and it would require ministerial subdivision of all the counties and require that the counties allow subdivision down to a minimum of 2,000 square feet. That said, we will go to the testimony. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Okay. Mary Alice Evans, OPSD.
Good afternoon. Katia Balasiano for OPSD. Hello, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committee. OPSD is in support of this measure. We are in support of the production of additional housing and believe that this goes a long way towards accomplishing that. We do have one clarifying comment where we believe there's a little bit of inconsistency. That can be taken care of. I can certainly speak to that if you'd like me to, but you've got lots of people here today, so I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. DeMina Kani, HHFTC.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members. I'm DeMina Kani. I'm the Director of HHFTC. We stand on our testimony and support.
Thank you very much. Allison Kato, Attorney General's Office.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committee. We submitted comments on a technical matter. It's just the added, the bill adds a new subsection G that is ambiguous as written, so we've provided language to clarify that. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keopu, I can't say your last name, I'm sorry. Office of Fine Affairs.
Uh-huh. Keopu Relitz, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committees. My name is Keopu Relitz. I am the Director of Advocacy with the Office of Fine Affairs. You have a written testimony. We offer comments. In particular, I just want to highlight that we appreciate measures that allow native Hawaiians to maximize the land that they already have, to be able to have arrangements in which we can have families live on the same land and be able to provide that land or that housing, so that way we can keep more Hawaiians here in Hawaii. But at the same time, we do have some serious concerns about the further subdivision, the easing of the ability to subdivide and alienate land. If you look throughout history, a lot of times, no matter the greatest of intentions, that has a disparate impact on native Hawaiians. And so we think measures like these need to be coupled with direct financial capital assistance for native Hawaiians so that Hawaiians are able to actually afford the units when they are alienated. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Kainaha, County of Kauai Planning Department. Is this Zendo? Am I here?
Sorry, I'm here virtually to testify.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thank you, Chairs, members of the Committees. Kainaha, on behalf of the Kauai Planning Department. We stand by our written testimony and comments we made on Companion Bill, House Bill 1630 with this bill. We're in full support of the bill in its entirety, recognizing that it is essentially, to a certain degree, three sections, one concerning ADUs by right, one concerning subdivisions, and one concerning impact fee requirements. We stand in support of all the amendments, but we also stand in support individually, should there be issues around one or two of these sections. So we don't want anything potentially killed over, say, one or two reasons, but we stand in full support.
Thank you, Director. Next up is Zendo Kern, County of Kauai Planning Department, on Zoom, in support.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Aloha, everybody. Zendo Kern, Planning Director for Hawaii Counties. A pleasure to be here, Chairs and members of the Committee, and thank you for the opportunity for me to provide testimony. We also stand in support of the bill. We think it's key to have the tools in the toolbox to meet the needs. Out of all the various trainings and conferences and whatnot we've been to over the years, housing is at the forefront of many counties. ADUs and smaller lot sizes are a couple of the key tools to implement that. I think especially when development is kept within the urban core area and has the necessary infrastructure to support that, where as it relates to a subdivision, that's going to be key. And the additional dwelling units, having that as a by-right ability for folks to create additional housing for long-term residents, or excuse me, long-term basis for rentals and housing family members, is absolutely key in order to help our housing situation. So we stand by our written testimony as well. I'll stay online if there's any questions and happy to offer any additional comments, feedback, or support. Mahalo.
Thank you, Zendo. Next up is Audrey Suga Nakagawa, AARP Hawaii, in support on Zoom.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairs, members of the Committee. I'm Audrey Suga Nakagawa, Advocacy Director for AARP Hawaii, and we stand our testimony in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up is Trey Gordner, Hawaii Zoning Atlas, in support.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My name is Trey Gordner. I direct the Hawaii Zoning Atlas, and I'm here today testifying in support. Hawaii Zoning Atlas is part of a nationwide research collective revealing how local zoning laws have been used to restrict housing supply and reduce housing affordability. What the Committees are asked to consider today is a clear and tested policy solution in response to a pressing problem supported by an overwhelming consensus. I want to be clear because there's been some confusion in the news about what this bill really means. What it really says is that in light of our housing crisis, our counties should be required to add small homes on small lots in existing neighborhoods only where excess infrastructure capacity exists. It's good long-range planning and good fiscal practice to make the most of the pipes, lines, roads we already have on the land we've already developed before building more. Moreover, the American Planning Association, the national professional organization of urban planners, has endorsed the ideas that this bill enacts, and many states have already adopted similar measures, red states and blue states, large states and small states. State action is essential in this case because the governing structure of land use decisions has been shown to amplify the voices of an unrepresentative minority and lock local governments into a perpetual cycle of undersupply. And that's the situation we find ourselves in today. Land use authority, planning authority, is ultimately delegated to the counties. It is a responsibility of the state to act in the public interest when the public interest is not being met through the governing structures we have in place today. So for those reasons, and because the underlying logic of the state bills is strong, smaller homes on smaller lots are more affordable by design and will keep more local families in Hawaii, I urge the Chairs to support the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trey. Next up is Susan Lee, Hawaii Housing Affordability Coalition in Support. In person, okay. Next up is Matt Popovich, Hawaii YMB in Support, in person, on Zoom.
I'm on Zoom, actually. Should I go now or wait until?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Aloha, Committee. I am, my name is Matt Popovich. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm ill right now. This is my family. I represent Hawaii YMB. We are a group of Hawaii residents who strongly support solutions to our housing crisis. We are in support of SB 3202 because it is an incremental reform to allow gentle density in our neighborhoods that retains home rule for counties to regulate all aspects of building regulation, except that it must allow lower minimum lot sizes. They can't deny a permit just because there's a second ADU being asked for. We're in a crisis. When Hawaii residents recognize we're in a crisis, a poll run by Holomoo Collective has found that 87% support measures to allow two to four homes on a typical-sized lot. So while the YMBs may have an outside voice in this conversation in hearings, we just know that, you know, the vast majority of Hawaii residents are in strong support of measures like this. Every year, we lose thousands of Hawaii residents. In 2002, we lost a number greater than the entire population of YNI. So, you know, serious measures have to be taken to counteract this, and this bill, you know, I think is a powerful solution that has worked successfully in other places like Auckland, New Zealand, and can work successfully here as well. So as you've heard from the Department of Staff here and past hearings, ADUs are a key part of keeping Hawaii residents in Hawaii, and for that reason, we strongly support this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Matt. Next up is Arjun Ahim, Hawaii Apple Seed. Did I see her? Is she on Zoom? In support? No. Okay. Next up, Sterling Higa, Hawaii Housing Future, Housing Hawaii's Future, in support.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Committee Members. My name is Sterling Higa, and I live in Haiku with my wife and our four children. I'm testifying on behalf of Housing Hawaii's Future in support of SB 3202. Chairs, Committee Members, we can't wait. Every year, this legislature meets, and every year, 10,000 people leave our state, as the last testifier mentioned. Why? Because of the cost of living, because of the cost of housing. You can look at the cover of today's paper, "Housing is Unaffordable, and My Generation Can't Afford to Wait." This bill has an incredible amount of support, all ages, from Housing Hawaii's Future representing the next generation to AARP Hawaii representing hundreds of thousands of senior citizens, more than a fifth of our state's population. All political persuasions, from Hawaii Apple Seed on the progressive left to Free Market Grassroots Institute, all four county planning departments and the state planning department that you heard from earlier, nearly 100 other organizations and individuals in support, and even the Chair of the Honolulu City Council wants to see this bill through if you check your testimony packet. Why? Because SB 3202 is good policy, and we need to be building missing-middle housing for young families and for aging kupuna alike. A recent candidate for governor proposed a radical plan to end the housing shortage. Not Josh Green. That was Tom Gill in 1970. The counties have had zoning authority for more than 50 years since then and have not done enough to solve the housing shortage. So what about you? This year, state legislature, join us in saying we can't wait. For our keiki and our kupuna, we can't wait. For missing-middle, multi-generational housing so we can afford to stay, we can't wait. I thank you for your vote in support of SB 3202.
Thank you, Sterling. Next up is Ted Kapalas from Grassroots Institute of Hawaii.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committees. Ted Kapalas with Grassroots Institute. We want to express our strong support for SB 3202. Simply put, we need this bill to make it easier to build one more ADU on a lot. That's ultimately what we're talking about here. While people want to label this as the monster home bill, that simply isn't true. At a recent city council hearing, Honolulu DPP Director Apuna flat out confirmed that these bills would not impact the county's ability to go after illegal monster homes. Unfortunately, though, the counties have failed to act when it comes to making homes that can be built, and that's why I think the state needs to step in. I mean, just look at the Honolulu Primary Urban Center Development Plan from 20 years ago, which identified the need for more smaller lots. Well, we're still having the conversation 20 years later. They've updated the plan, or there's a proposed update to the plan, that a lot of it calls for more missing middle, just like this bill. Are we going to wait for another 20 years for the counties to actually take action? There's been zero urgency, and we need our lawmakers to act swiftly now. It's not enough to say, "Don't worry, we'll get to it soon." This is an emergency. We need action today. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ted. Next up, Evan Oye from Naiapuai with comments.
Down on everything.
Thank you, Evan. Joshua Wish, Holomoo Collaborative.
Danger of coming up after Ted as I've got to lower this by about 50 degrees. Thank you for not minding that I'm vertically challenged. Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committee, I'm Josh Wish with Holomoo Collaborative, and we remain in strong support of this measure. Our, what we do is we're basically dedicated to making sure that all local working families in the state can stay in Hawaii by making sure that they can afford to stay, and that's why we're supporting this bill. I have zero doubt that every single person on this panel right now wants to make sure that we keep Hawaii affordable for all local working families. And of course, the question is always, how do you get there? And the efforts that have gone into this bill seem to be a good, reasonable, fair approach to doing that. It's basically about trying to make sure that you can build smaller homes that people here can actually afford while retaining some good controls, such as making sure that the county still maintains control over infrastructure requirements. And we think that also making sure that the counties have flexibility around owner occupancy requirements so that the homes benefit local families also makes sense. But at the end of the day, it's just about finding that right balance, and if I do my math right, this is about the only bill left this session that actually would help provide housing. And so there's a golden opportunity there as well. The last thing I'll say is just, and this is a little bit in our testimony, but just to underscore it, it's just, for all the ink that's been spilled over this measure, it's actually surprisingly popular. The numbers, I think, if we got this right from our poll, is that 86% of respondents somewhat or strongly support creating new housing people could afford in their neighborhood, and 87% of respondents somewhat or strongly support loosening zoning requirements in urban areas to allow people to build starter homes if it would help keep local working families in Hawaii. And I guess I'll just end by saying, on a personal note, I live in Kaileua. So for anyone who thought that no one who lived in Kaileua actually supports something like this, I'm living proof that we do. So thank you very much here for any questions that you've got. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next up is Reed Mizue, AIA Hawaii State Council, in opposition on Zoom. Okay. Next up, Jacob Wiener-Senk. That's really poor, sorry. Wiener-Senk. Please help me. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. I know. It's only 2 o'clock.
No worries. It's pronounced Winsec.
I was close, right?
That was one of the funniest attempts to say my last name ever. It's Polish, so it's inherently unpronounceable.
And he was not close at all.
Aloha. Aloha, Committee Chairs, Vice Chairs, members. My name is Jacob Winsec. I am Chairman of Hawaii Young Republicans, and on behalf of our organization, we would like to testify in strong support of this measure. Every day, young people are being priced out of the homes they love. We are not able to afford living here, and housing is a major, is a major cause driving our overall cost of living crisis. SB 3202 has the strong potential to put us on the path back to affordability. Increasing housing supply will drive down costs. Just this morning, the Nonpartisan Cato Institute over in Washington, excuse me. Just this morning, the nonpartisan Cato Institute over in Washington, excuse me, submitted, published a brief research analysis collating data from multiple Federal Reserve agencies indicating that, long story short, cutting through all the economic language, when you increase housing supply, you bring down costs and you increase socioeconomic opportunity for everyone across all, all classes, across all divides. I strongly urge this committee and HIR strongly urges the committees assembled to please support and pass this much-needed housing affordability legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winsec. Next up is Stephanie Sakamoto, BIA Hawaii in support.
Down on everything.
Thank you very much. Eliza Talbot, Hawaii Chamber of Commerce Hawaii in support. On Zoom. Not present. Okay. Christine Attoza, Hawaii Good Neighbor in opposition.
Aloha, committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Christine Attoza. I'm a volunteer community member representing High Good Neighbor. We strongly oppose SB 3202. We appreciate the intent of the bill to create affordable housing, but believe it will have the opposite effect. I think we all share the common goal of wanting affordable housing. We just see it differently, I suppose, in how we get there. We are not wealthy residents who own large parcels of land. Many are from Kamaki, like myself, Palolo, Kapahulu, Manoa, Kalihii, Kaniohi, Halava Heights, and Kailua. And yes, there are working property with large lots and large yards aren't the norm. I'm, like I said, from Kapahulu and Kamaki, where maximum density is allowed on Oahu. And I can tell you firsthand that allowing more density increases property value and drives prices up. Affordable housing will not be built if this bill goes through as is. The bill does not include language to ensure affordability and to disincentivize investors and out-of-state buyers. We can't give false hope that a developer is going to buy a million-dollar property, build two to three homes, and then sell it for an affordable price. They will design, build, and sell to what the market will bear, and it will not be affordable for working-class families. They aren't in the business of breaking even. Supporters believe there will be a flood of housing which will reduce rent and home prices. Unfortunately, we don't have a mass of residential lots for sale for that to happen. For example, just in my Kamaki neighborhood, we have, around the block from me, we have a 16-bedroom, 12-bathroom house that's been split up into eight apartment units. It's being used as both short-term and long-term rentals. Back in 2018, they were advertising the apartments on Craigslist, and at that time, it was going for $2,500 in rent. There's another lot, a 7,500-square-foot lot that was bought for 1.2 million back in 2019. They built two homes and they sold in May 2020 for 1.375 million and 1.37. There's another lot that was purchased in 2021. They paid 2.6 million. They built four homes on it, and each home sold for between 1.5 and 1.7 million. So just that alone in my neighborhood, we see what it does when you allow more density. So I, I urge you all to put a pause, and especially for Oahu, where we're already very dense. And I hope that you oppose SB 3202. Thank you.
Also don't call it not. Okay. Thank you. Next up is Marci Muraoka, individual in opposition on Zoom. Not present. Sarah Chinin, individual in opposition in person.
Hello. Sorry, I'm not quite prepared, but I'm an old woman who's lived in Hawaii for generations. Well, but I know the young man said, don't wait. I mean, but I think you need to wait because first you need the big picture. I remember Hawaii when we all knew each other and neighborhoods were safe. And yeah, you, you should figure out how to do affordable housing, but I don't think this is the bill. You will allow developers and investors to buy lots, put really a lot of little homes, and they're not going to sell them to be affordable. They're going to make money. Their rents will not be affordable. They're going to get the maximum number of dollars for each unit. And you know what? The local families are moving out. What do they want? You think they want to live in a little house, you know, and have their four kids in a 1,000 square foot house. I really urge you to wait at least because this is like putting concrete on paradise. And we need to maintain paradise, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aloha. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, Chair. I'm representing the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. Our organization has over 1,000 members. These are nonprofit, small businesses. We are testifying in support today of the bill. It's very clear that there is an outward migration of our local people. We just held a conference on Las Vegas for the first time ever because of the huge migration of our people. We need bold solutions. We need to be innovative. We need to be courageous. There are challenges, I think, ahead in terms of what could come of this bill, but I believe that we need to make some big decisions that are going to change the trajectory. 45,000 homes are said to be needed in just six years. And I have no idea how we would possibly do that without some kind of bold approach like this bill proposes. So on behalf of our organization and our members, we are here testifying in support, and we stand on the rest of the comments in our testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lordz Millian, individual in opposition on Zoom. Not present. Jennifer Taylor, individual in opposition in person. Nope. Okay. Trevor Nagamine, individual in support in person. Joey Katzen, individual in support in person.
Aloha. My, my name is Joey Katzen, and I am the Managing Director of Hawaii Angels, which is a 20-year-old organization here that fosters the local startup ecosystem by providing venture funding. I am here in my personal capacity, though, and I have not pulled the group for their opinions. I'm also a former land use attorney, and I'm also the member of a, of a team that was trying to build 150 homes of affordable housing on small 2,000-square-foot lots under Joshua Green's, Governor Green's emergency proclamation. And we ultimately failed the proclamation collapse. So I, I speak with this kind of background on the subject. I want to start by saying that our housing crisis in Hawaii and on, across the United States and across many countries of the world is self-imposed. On Oahu where I live, there were twice as many housing units built in the 30 years leading up to 1990 as in the 30 years since 1990. So this is very generational, and the people that bought their houses years ago before the scarcity of housing are not aware viscerally of the struggle that those of us that are younger are facing. You can trace a lot of this back to a mass redown zoning of the island that was passed by Honolulu City Council around 1980. Before then, almost all the units that were built over that period, a majority of them were small walk-up apartments. They were fourplexes, and they were houses on small lots. And since then, that has become nearly impossible to do. And there's no wonder that we are now out of housing. We've basically, on Oahu, we've set aside 5% of the buildable land on the island, and we've said, that's where all the new people have to go, and they all have to live in skyscrapers. This is not how everyone wants to live. People would love to live in our neighborhoods, and I think it's crazy that right now we're using government law at the city level to say that we have a 10,000-square-foot lot in Kahala, and we're going to allow one wealthy family to build a mansion there that's like 5,000 square feet. But what we're not going to allow them to do, using the power of city law, is to say that five local families are allowed to subdivide that house or to build five small houses on that lot. It is classist, and the cities and counties have shown that they are not able politically to make this change. So what's happening now, what this bill is asking you to do is the same thing that's happening in California, that's happening in Washington, that's happening in Minnesota, it's happening in Oregon, it's even happening in Republican Montana, which is the state taking over and saying, we know that local, the smaller the interests go to the neighborhood, the more they're going to want to protect their own interests and what they've bought into. And it takes some state action to say, we see society as a whole, and we have to resolve these externalities. So because of that, I'm strongly in support of this bill, and I really hope you guys, you guys vote for it.
Thank you very much, Joey. Next up is Ola Popovich, individual in support in person on Zoom. Okay.
Hi. Sorry, I'm doing, I'm sick right now. I'm joining from Zoom. I'll be quick. So I am in support of this bill because what has been going on is just plain and not working for families. People cannot afford to find housing. There are young professionals, my friends who are teachers, can only stay here and marry somebody to get a second income. Nurses are struggling. These are young professionals that are going to be taking care of this silver tsunami that are going to be living here. I urge you guys to think about the better for the whole of the community rather than allowing small groups to have the ability to decide what's better for everybody. So yes, please consider real people that are going to be impacted by your decisions today, and keeping up the status quo is not what's been working. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is David Chemo-Frankel, individual in opposition in person. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm an attorney, worked on land use issues. I also have a master's in urban regional planning. I want to focus on some drafting problems with the bill. And I don't know, are we commenting on the Senate draft two or the version that got circulated over the weekend?
The Senate draft two.
So we're not commenting on the version that was?
Yes, Senate draft two, sorry.
So we're not talking about House Draft One today?
You can, if you've seen the draft, you can make references to it, but.
Okay. So one of the problems is, sub-paragraph one refers to, um, um, each dwelling unit shall comply with county development standards, okay? Which we all think is a good thing. The problem is the worst of the word, use of the word "unit" without also referring to a lot. Because the standards need to apply both to the unit and the lot. If you, Maui County, Honolulu and Kauai have restrictions on lots to ensure they're not, too much of the land is not covered in impermeable surfaces, surface. The reason for that is to reduce what's called non-point source water pollution. Chair Tarnas's wife worked on that plan three decades ago. It ensures that polluted runoff doesn't get to our coastal waters. It reduces the temperature in our neighborhoods. But your bill, as it's drafted by just referring to units and not lots, will supersede the county ordinances that make sure that our neighborhoods retain some green and, and serve a basis of flood control. So I think that's, that's important for you guys to fix. Another problem is that in, I'm, I'm referring to the draft that circulated this weekend. You have provided that one and two, but you need to have number three, which comes from paragraph below, which the dwelling units and lot shall comply with all ordinances enacted pursuant to 46 dash four. The reason that paragraph essentially needs to be elevated is because you have a provided that. That provided that needs to, all that language needs to be moved up. If it's not, you create a conflict, and attorneys will love that, and it'll become fertile ground for a lot of litigation against the counties. So you need to, to move that up. There are, I would really urge you to schedule another hearing on another draft of this bill. Some of us have seen the draft that was circulating this weekend, others have not. This is a very complicated subject legally, and you need to offer people an opportunity to comment as these various drafts go on. The way my understanding of legislative process is, this is really the last time the public can meaningfully comment. Everything after this is behind closed doors. So I'd really recommend you come up with a House Draft One and bring it back to these three committees for another hearing. That's the only way that, I mean, things are changing fast and furious with these various drafts. And the reality is, this bill has been, uh, gone through a very quick process, unlike a lot of legislative bills, very few hearings, and there needs to be another opportunity after the next draft comes out for us to comment. Finally, I want to just mention the, the subdivision issue. Chair mentioned that subdivision approvals are ministerial. That's a, a canard that David Callis has perpetuated for years. It is not, that is not true.
Yes, sir. If you could try and wrap up your testimony.
Sure. Subdivision approval is a discretionary process. This, the last part of this bill addresses a, an issue unique to Kauai, which is whether the planning commission or the planning director gets to make decisions. Still discretionary, if you look at the language of the code. I don't know if it's appropriate for the legislature to be stepping in to do something that the Kauai voters should themselves decide in terms of who should have the authority, the director or the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, there's been many drafts that have circulated over months as this bill has been worked and reworked. So I'm, I'm not entirely sure which draft you're referring to, as there's been a number of iterations, and there will be, you know, in front of us today is SB 3202, SD2. And if we amend that, that'll go for continued deliberation.
Right. Be nice to have a hearing on that new language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Mahia Heinz, individual in support. Mahana Heinz.
Or to my two representatives here, Representative Chiyama and Representative IU, I'm Nicole Heind, on the neighborhood board, but not speaking on behalf of them today, but aloha, representatives, and, and to the committee here. I stand in support of this because, like it was mentioned earlier, we do need much more bold kind of actions when it comes to addressing housing issues here in Hawaii. It's hard for not just Native Hawaiian families, but families who are struggling to stay with here in the islands, to buy other properties, you know, to, to seek real estate that they can grow their families in outside of here. And so actions like this allow us to live as family on, on the same property, share in building our, our own collective family wealth together. And so hopefully this is just a step, that this is an iteration of, of a plethora of new ideas that come forward on dealing with housing issues. So thank you guys for your time and consideration. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up is just someone who wrote Bruce, individual in opposition. Any Bruces in the room? Okay.
I'm Bruce, but with the last name.
There's no last name. Okay, well, you're him for today.
You fit the first name.
As long as you're in opposition.
I'm in opposition, yes, I am.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Yes. You know, I, first of all, thank each and every one of you for serving and addressing the needs of Hawaiian people, and I'm certainly in agreement that there's a need for affordable housing. But I think this bill has a prerequisite that is going to have unintended consequences. Number one, you've already heard on the issues of traffic, I think about Kalanioli, there's only one way in and one way out. You double or triple the amount of people there, it's going to, really going to be bedlam. The infrastructure is going to be a problem. The environmental degradation, I think of Hanama Bay after the, the pandemic. You know, all of a sudden, the fish started coming back. It's because people are causing problems, and the more we have, the worse it's going to be. This is going to increase, it appears, a lot of people coming here. You know, and there's nothing that says that the lower prices are going to attract only, for only Hawaiian people and Hawaiian residents. I can't tell you the number of people said, I'd love to live here, but I can't afford it. So now you bring the pricing down, and here comes the masses. So it's not necessarily going to be just for the people that we intended to be, that's, I think there's an unintended consequence. I'm questioning also that the fact that there's, it's been quoted that 87, 86% of people are for this, when the Star Advertiser did a, granted, it's not an official survey, but they did a survey in the Big Q and, and said only 18% of the people are for it. You know, this is interesting that there's such a dichotomy here. But perhaps I think the biggest issue here is psychological. I'm a psychologist. I do crisis psychology. We address 2,500 crises a month, so I know outrage. I've been a consultant for the FBI in workplace violence and terrorism. And the issue here is, you know, that people who own property have a sense of entitlement. And we've seen it over and over again. You got your lot, your dog's on my property, and I'm going to, you know, do whatever. And so entitlement causes outrage, it causes conflicts, it causes hostilities, it causes violence. And so entitlement causes outrage, it causes conflicts, it causes hostilities, it causes violence. You know, you're taking away freedoms of people that feel like this is mine, I bought it and you know, this is the way it needs to stay and you're not going to mess it up. And so, you know, it's much like taking gun control, you know? As much as I'd love to see guns not around, you try to take guns away, you're going to have a problem in this country. Uh, I hate to say that, I wish it wasn't that way, but that's the way it's going to be. And so you start taking away freedoms of people and there's going to be a disunity of the citizens. A decrease in aloha, if you will, uh, you know, because people are not going to take this lightly. People in my neighborhood, everybody, everybody's saying this is horrible, you know, we don't want it. So I don't understand why so many people think that this is going to be a solution when it can attract non-Hawaiian as well as other people. So, um, you know, yes, Hawaiians who are working class, who need help, yes, I agree with that. But there are unintended consequences to this bill, and I think there are other alternatives that are available. And I ask that you, uh, please consider, um, you know, an alternative to this, since there are alternatives that we need to, to try. I know some, we've had some missteps before, but let's double down and take a look at other options. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bruce. Uh, next up is Carol Titcom, in opposition. Next is BA Alexander, individual in opposition on Zoom. Okay, Janine Johnson, individual in opposition on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Aloha. Um, my name is Janine Johnson. I live in New Valley and I, um, started to think what would happen if SB three-two, three-two oh two was passed. Our bedroom community is out on this way. If we had as the max number of homes that this bill wants, it would be devastating to us. I saw a house, one house get, um, bought up by a Chinese developer who built three homes on that one lot. And each one went for more than two million dollars. That is not what I call affordable housing and getting other people into Hawaii that can afford it. There is no way that you can prevent people from doing that. Developers are the only ones who can afford to do that. As a, as a person with a fam, that lives with my family, several generations in my own house, we can't afford to, to build three or four different homes on our lot, on our seven thousand five hundred lot. So I don't know who you think is going to be building all of these homes. It's not going to be native Hawaiians because we can't afford it. And I'm just, I'm just really upset that you haven't put anything in there for allowing the affordability for local people. You can't just say that people are going to, the developers are going to be nice and they're going to only sell to local people. That's not going to happen. I've seen that in my neighborhood and it's outpricing our local people again. So I would respectfully ask that you deny this.
Thank you very much. Next up is Janice Mitchell, individual in opposition, in person. Nope, okay. Uh, Mitchell Mattson, individual in opposition on Zoom. Michelle, sorry. Nope, okay. Damian Waikoloa, individual in support, in person. Okay, perfect.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs and members of the committee. My name is Damian Waikoloa and I am testifying in my individual capacity as a resident, uh, working-class resident who was born and raised and currently live in Manoa Valley. Uh, I stand on my written testimony in support of SB thirty-two oh two and I'm grateful for the opportunity to highlight a few of my key thoughts. For those in my generation, we need more options. We're actually out of options at this point. We need options on how we can better utilize the land we already have and is already developed. And I believe that SB thirty-two oh two, um, could help give us more options. For me, I come from a large family. Um, I'm one of twenty-seven cousins between my mom and my dad's side. I got to spend some time with them over spring break. And of my twenty-seven cousins, eighteen of us, two-thirds of us still either live with our parents, live in a house that was inherited from a deceased parent, or was financially helped by our parents, right? Although we are all lucky and thankful for our parents and for all that they've given us, this is an absolutely unreasonable, um, way to think that this is a sustainable method for our future generations. So other families not as fortunate as mine are either squeezed out of Hawaii or into homelessness. And for me myself, I am set to inherit my mother's home, which I'm greatly thankful for. However, I am unsure what we can do, um, and if I can actually have children myself, if I can even start a family. Because we already have two generations of my family living in that home and, uh, our only option is to squeeze a third generation into that same home that was only probably built for maybe two generations, and we have no other options. So I believe that SB thirty-two oh two would give my partner and I the ability to make space, to make the ability to start a family and have children, to make space for my parents to age in place with us, and to make space where three generations of a local family can live on the same property with dignity. Lastly, I urge this, um, committee to take action. Decades and decades of inaction has, was what caused this housing crisis. And so obviously inaction is not the answer.
Damian, I'm going to have you wrap it up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Uh, next up is going to be Chune James, individual in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, great. Thank you. I hope everyone is doing well. I totally understand this housing problem. I have been a residential real estate broker for over thirty years and I've also been, uh, at the city council for, uh, various items. But when we are creating good public policies, we have to make sure that when we're trying to solve a problem, we do not create a thousand more problems. I'm just going to talk about Oahu. What happened to the promise to build affordable housing along the real corridor for our residents? What is our vision for the state of Hawaii? What happened to the Hawaii twenty fifty plan that considered all levels of planning? We cannot cement the entire Hawaii into a big parking lot. It is not sustainable. And let me say this as strongly as I can, instant value increase will happen. The minute a land is entitled to a higher density, the property value automatically escalates. So if these bills are entitled, property across the board will become more expensive automatically. There is already an existing condominium regime called CPR that allows subdivision of smaller lots into higher density in our residential communities. Right now, I'm working with someone who has CPR'd a lot and it's only two thousand square feet. In Oahu, there are already existing about eighty to eighty-eight thousand entitled construction that is allowed. But nothing is happening yet. What is happening with those entitled buildings? Is it because of DPP problems, permitting? And also, my biggest concern is the definition of Hawaii residents. Will these bills prevent foreign investors or developers to come in and flip and sell and invest and speculate? Do we think that investors would give cheap grants to local folks or to sell their homes at cheap prices? To establish residency under HRS seven eight point one C, a person must minimumly believe or say, I intend to make Hawaii my home while he or she is in Hawaii. That's it. Because someone's intent is someone's state of mind, a person does not have to show proof in order to demonstrate intent. Therefore, it does not matter if, for example, the, a new employee still have a driver's license from another state, or the new employee has not yet have a chance to register to vote in Hawaii, or the new employee just arrived in Hawaii last week. There's no proof, because no proof is required to show intent. So really, there is no proof that our local residents are going to be able to be protected from all these outside entities.
Ms. James, I'm going to have you wrap it up, please.
Okay, thank you very much. So the, the final result will be a residential community that will automatically increase in price and we're going to be packed like sardines with increased home prices. And long-term residents will be led with the negative impact. So I totally understand. I know everyone is coming from a good place, but let's, let's work on this more and not give this another open option for outside investors, developers to come in and exploit this situation. Thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up is Dale Gilmartin, individual in opposition. Okay, council member Tupola, in, with comments. Uh, go ahead.
Hi.
Hello, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay? Oh, your chair is on.
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. Oh, sorry, I'm too close to this camera. Like, super close. Okay. Uh, aloha, thank you guys so much, um, to all the three committee chairs. Good afternoon. So I just wanted to share a testimony. You know, we did have a discussion at the council last week regarding these two bills and I am in favor of us increasing the ability to talk about different forms of affordable housing. However, I just wanted to note that our DPP director did submit amendments to the bill that I think would help to preserve our ability to do the community planning and sustainability plans on the county level for our zoning. So that's all I wanted to add, is if you could please look through her amendments. She did state in her testimony, she believes that with those amendments that would preserve our ability to kind of continue to maintain neighborhoods. And thank you guys for your work and thank you for having this hearing.
Thank you, council member. Uh, going back to Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii, I think is now present on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Sorry, I was, uh, I missed the earlier opportunity. The Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii stands in strong support of this bill. We feel that is a really important issue for our workforce. In every industry that we have across the state of Hawaii, we are facing workforce shortages. And these shortages are caused by the high cost of living and the inability to access housing. But we really see this as a huge issue for our business community. If we want to keep our small businesses here, we have to do something now. I think we understand the concerns, we understand the amendments that are proposed by the city and county of Honolulu and we are happy to, um, support those. However, something has to be done now. We have all waited far too long. Our young families cannot wait any longer. We cannot have these conversations any longer. We must move forward and do something concrete to create housing for our workforce. So with that said, we stand in strong support of this measure. We appreciate all of the effort being put into this and we look forward to more conversations. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's everyone that's registered to testify on this matter. I'm going to take this in two groups. Is there anyone in person that wants to testify on SB twenty thirty-two oh two? Okay, come up. Go ahead, state your name, please.
I'm Peter Savio, affordable housing developer and advocate, and I am very much opposed to this bill. For sixty years, you've been trying to solve our housing crisis. And the reason is, you're making the same mistake over and over again. This is not going to reduce the cost of housing. This is the best example I've seen of unintended consequences and never let a crisis go to waste. Certain groups are using our housing crisis to get this bill pushed through, not to help the local guys, not to make housing affordable, because this bill will definitely increase the cost of housing and have the opposite effect of what you intend. You got to understand, when you take density and you add more density to a unit, you create value. Value reflects in a higher price. Mass transit, we created twenty square miles of additional zoning for affordable housing. We have more than enough zoning. People talk about five percent, that doesn't matter. We have enough zoning. That's not the issue here. The point being, we have to worry about all the other issues. Adding more density increases the fire risk. Please be aware of that. I want you to remember the news article that came out about this story. It had a picture of a small home on two thousand square feet. If you read the caption underneath, the price of that house was nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's not affordable. All of you, we make these decisions, but the problem is not supply. Hawaii's problem is demand. The more you build, the more affordable, the more retirees, the more investors will come, local guys will never buy. The local buyer can only afford a four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar house on the average. All of these homes you're looking at are going to come out more than that. We need to control the demand so the local guys have a chance to buy. Supply is where you're making your mistake. Supply is not the solution. The more you build, the more affordable, we cannot afford to buy because the prices will be higher than that price of four hundred thousand. Pricing should be tied to the wages. Because in a community with no outside influence, you'd have to build homes based on wages. And if you use that as your starting point, you're going to realize this bill is a failure. It will not succeed. You will fail and will be worse off than we are now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Uh, Komokano Osorio, do you want to testify?
Sorry, Duncan Ozorio, I'm here on behalf of Chair Tommy Waters. Because his testimony was referenced, I just want to kind of clarify his position on this. We did, uh, submit testimony, uh, providing comments. And most of that centers around the fact that we continue to have pretty grave concerns with how the bill is currently written. We did submit a proposed draft that largely addresses our concerns. But to clarify a few other things, uh, in our hearing, DPP did, or the director did sort of testify that she didn't have issues with the bill as drafted. But she was almost immediately contradicted by our chief planning officer right after that. So I think part of this discussion on really saying that there's kind of universal support across the counties is not really, some of the other testimony, we're not really talking, our concerns really aren't five residential units on a ten thousand square foot lot, it's that there would be fifteen under this bill, um, which I think is a little, little bit more of a challenge. Um, we also have concerns that existing infrastructure would be the sole determinant on where and how we build. So, as I said before, our draft sort of seeks to resolve those issues. I know there's a bunch of different drafts getting floated around. We'd be in support as long as our primary concerns are sort of addressed through any amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Angela, go ahead.
Angela Melody Young, um, in strong support on behalf of CARES, a grassroots movement. So I got this research from the city council hearing that happened a few days ago because of a resolution in response to Senate Bill three-two oh two. And this is just an interpretation of things I've heard on the Honolulu County, um, public channel. And my interpretation may not be the most accurate. And I'm going to go over, um, a list of number of, um, things that were discussed. And so I'm just going to summarize the interpretation, okay? And I don't want to say like the director said this, or he or she said that, because I don't want it to sound like I'm calling someone out, okay? So I'm just going to summarize. So, this act, if enacted, will treat all lands within urban and residential zones the same. Urban land in North Shore or town allows for the same development density. Generally, in the city's planning documents, there is a consideration of different locations. Pearl City versus North Shore versus Waimeanalo. And the availability of access to infrastructure. Is there available sewer? Is there enough traffic capacity? By treating all the lands the same, there is inconsistency with the long-term planning process. The different residential zones are R thirty to R three point five. And according to the texts of the L U Os, the purpose of the different zone is to provide different standards of living in different districts and communities. The lifestyle in Kahala is different than the lifestyle in Pearl City or Waimeanalo, and so is the landscape and infrastructure. So the Act for residentially zoned lots will be mandated to all districts zoned residential R two, R five, R three point five, R twenty, R ten. And this proposal does not apply for apartment districts and B M S, BMX districts. So, um, and let's talk about subdivision. Considerations need to include infrastructure such as circulation, traffic circulation of lots, and other requirements for infrastructure such as spacing, sewer, parking. So if you take ten thousand square feet for subdivision into five two thousand square feet lots, you need to have the same appropriate infrastructure such as circulation, traffic and sidewalks. such as circulation, traffic, and sidewalks. And you try to effectuate this on the subdivided smaller lots, you won't be able to under subdivision rules and requirements to receive this request. Because this can be defined by rulemaking by DPP. Um, according to this act, a subdivision request to act upon it, it would require DPP to do an approval or denial, and DPP is not forced to approve every subdivision asking for a two thousand square foot lot. So, for example, right, um, if a homeowner wants to subdivide because of this Senate bill, the homeowner owns a ten thousand square foot property and wants to subdivide into smaller lots, the bill passes, right, the Senate Bill three-two-oh-two, and the city asserts authority to reject the subdivision request because infrastructure concerns. The issue can potentially be resolved in litigation or an appeal to the Board of Appeals.
Angela, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Yes, so, uh, the more specific will over the rule, the more general. And, uh, it's illogical to say that there is no infrastructure for it, but it is allowed to build the units without sufficient infrastructure, right? So, um, the big question is always infrastructure. How do you plan for additional infrastructure for the growth of developmental, um, density? And the, one thing DPP did say is that the most helpful thing the state can do is to help with infrastructure. So in conclusion, um, the proposal can really be developed, it can be tailored to the county's needs. Um, and the original draft potentially allowed hazardous development of monster homes. And the second draft amended statutory provisions to continue L U O authority to set a limit to regulate hazardous development of monster homes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I forgot to give you the solution to make this bill work.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that hasn't testified yet that'd like to testify? Okay, come, come up, please say your name.
John Otto, um, strong opposition to thirty-two-oh-two. And I'll say what, uh, what he was trying to say earlier, what he missed about, um, there's no language that guarantees these houses will be affordable. And without that, without that, um, put into it, everything that everyone wants here, everyone wants the affordable home, is not gonna happen. AMI, um, it has to be based on AMI. Um, what is that number? What is affordable to the Hawaii resident? That's, has to be addressed. If that's not addressed, we're just throwing all of this to the wind and hoping it lands in our favor. Um, Bill thirty-two-oh-two will only increase investor interest in Hawaii's real estate market. Uh, we take this short-sighted approach to flooding the market and just crossing our fingers. I know investors personally, and they're licking their chops at this thirty-two-oh-two. Like many of you have heard, um, as soon as this place, these areas are zoned for increased housing, investors are gonna be like vultures on it, and there's no way locals are gonna get it. Absolutely not. More, more inventory will draw, um, higher costs, which equals more profit. So investors are gonna be all over that. I think we can all agree that there is no affordable land anywhere on Oahu. Million-dollar lots cover the island from Hawaii Kai to Makaha, Mauna to Makai. There's a clear and present danger in our housing market that no one seems to wanna address. As we share, as we sit here today, a large percentage of homes that become available are quickly gobbled up by investors that give, are more than willing and able to give cash, offers, many times larger sums of money over asking price. How is that a level playing field for local families? It's not. As Governor Josh Green said, cracking down on over eighty thousand illegal S T Rs in our state will immediately address the fifty thousand shortfall that we have. Why aren't we focusing on that? Why are we trying to create more laws and more convolute the situation when the clear problem is in front of us and we're not addressing it? We don't need thirty-two-oh-two. We need to disincentivize investors, both local and offshore. This is a cancer that's killing our housing market and driving prices up and locals out. Let's reject thirty-two-oh-two. There's no guardrails in it. There's no guardrails in it to protect what everybody in this room wants. Regardless of what you believe the right way is, it's, there's no guardrails there. Let's all stop taking one step forward and two steps back. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, John. Would you like to testify, ma'am? Uh, come up, please say your name.
Uh, Whitney, Whitney Bosel, and I'm testifying, uh, as an individual today, but I'd also like to note that the outdoor circle, as well as the Manoa branch of the outdoor circle, is opposed to these bills as they are currently drafted and have submitted testimony to that effect. Um, Chairs, Representatives, thank you. I'm, uh, we may need further development on Oahu, but it must remain, but it must remain planned for, considered, and implemented in ways that don't create other problems. I understand fully the need to have more housing and have it immediately. And if I were in your position, I would feel the same need to pass some legislation, but this bill is not the right way. The top-down approach, which kneecaps our county department's expertise, undercuts the work that has been undertaken in our Oahu and community-level plans, and interrupts other recently passed measures to direct smart growth on Oahu are simply not the right way to address this issue. Wanting to do something now doesn't change the simple reality that some areas of the island are better able to handle development than others, and some have been considered best to direct growth too. County departments ought to be able to continue to have oversight, not be divorced from their authority by the state. In order to care for the land so that it can continue to care for us, we need to direct growth in a thoughtful manner. Um, as others have said, considering the cost of building here, who do we think will take advantage of these bill, of this bill? It won't be, uh, local families, but instead developers, the same ones who are currently building monster homes. And, um, just because they haven't, you know, been incentivized to muck in, there'll probably be new developers getting in on the game as well. Neighborhoods which have already been losing green space and valuable and already scarce urban tree cover and our overtaxed stormwater system will all be at increased risk from this bill. I am all for growth, but let's have it directed to the places that we can, have determined can handle that growth. I would like to propose that Oahu, uh, be either entirely left off of this bill, or at a minimum, if, if people feel the need to pass something in this hasty top-down approach, that it be directed only to, like, the transit-oriented zone or a quarter mile from that area, or at least, uh, you know, leaving off Valley Ridge and near-town neighborhoods as defined by the Oahu general plans and the other community-level plans. Um, I'd like to point out as well that a lot of the testimony that we've heard in support is from those who will directly line their pockets with this, developers, those in finance. And so, that should be taken with a grain of salt. I say this as somebody with an architecture background, who lives at home with their parents and was born and raised here as well.
Wendy, can I have you wrap it up, please?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here, uh, in the audience that'd like to testify on this matter? Uh, come up. Please say your name.
Hi, my name is Catherine. My name is Catherine Kupuka. I submitted my testimony online, but I don't know whether it got through or not. My opposition to this bill is split. Well, I can understand the intent is to lower the cost of housing, because two dwellings can be built on a lot. For instance, my lot size is six thousand square feet, square feet. One could put three small dwellings. In Mililani, the policies are very strict. I wouldn't be allowed to build an A D U on my property. I suppose it would allow, be allowed in other communities. Something to think about, about is houses are built too close. One can hear your neighbor flushing the, their toilet. I'm grateful to have nice neighbors. Also, my bedroom is close to the sidewalk, that I can hear conversations of individuals doing their morning exercise walking. So if individuals can endure these, um, minor, um, consequences in living in communities where houses are so close to each other, well and good. I've heard of instances where neighbors are at odds with each other. For instance, um, I lived in Palo Valley, and the neighbors were far apart. One, on the right side of my house, the, there was a driveway. On the left side, there was also a driveway, so the neighbors are far apart. And you couldn't hear conversations, you, you know? Thank you for allowing me to voice my concern.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else in person, before we move to Zoom? Um, I think AIA Hawaii State Council was on Zoom. Are you available to testify?
Yes, can you?
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, this is Reed Mizui, President of the AIA Hawaii. We represent over, uh, eight hundred licensed, uh, professionals, architects in the state of Hawaii, and we stand on our written testimony in opposition to SB, uh, thirty-two-oh-two. Uh, just wanted to note, um, we have our testimony, and we have some suggestive ideas there. Um, but we oppose basically on, you know, if this is for affordable housing, related to affordable housing in any way, um, there's no language in there about affordability. Um, and then secondly, we just adamantly believe that, um, this type of measure is an overstep by the state onto county home rule responsibilities. Um, there are just so much going on in each individual county that having a, a gloss-over bill like this is detrimental to what each county has done through decades of understanding their own counties. Uh, thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is Addison Bulosan on Zoom.
Aloha, thank you so much for allowing me to testify. Uh, my name's Councilmember Addison Bulosan. I'm, uh, Councilmember here on Ko'olaki, and I'm testifying on my own personal behalf. Um, I just wanna ask this body to please vote in favor, uh, and, and be in strong support of this bill. Um, uh, it's a very emotional time for me because, uh, my wife is thirty-seven weeks pregnant. She's three centimeters dilated, and at any moment in the life, I can be a first-time dad. I'm born and raised here on Ko'olaki. I moved away and back home ten years ago. I'm one of the few that came back to try to make it here back home. Um, I understand the burden that you guys are facing and that you're considering every what-if possible. You're considering every unintended consequences, and you're trying to make the right decision. Um, but I really hope that this body put foremost in your thought, not the what ifs, but the what is. The what is, is that we're having a hard time calling Hawaii home, because we don't have enough housing. This bill will help local families. This will, bill will help me. Uh, this help bill will help my cousins, my aunties, who are still living in multi-generational homes that can't build on top of what we need to support our multi-generational homes, because this bill isn't passed yet. If it does pass today, uh, it will help us directly and immediately. Um, I, I can't explain harder enough how this has been, uh, uh, sort of, uh, uh, a success stories with, uh, what's happening on Ko'olaki with our areas and ADUs, and this is just an added ability to help our local people on island. Uh, make no mistake, but this bill is not about the what ifs of other developments, small-time developments, doing things that was explained earlier. This is truly about local people. And I need the bodies to fully understand that this is about the what it is. Um, but if you're gonna consider what, what the what ifs is, please consider this one what if. What if we don't pass this? And we keep seeing our local people leaving Ko'olaki, Ko'olaki and the rest of islands. What if it's your cousin, your auntie, your uncle, the people you care about that want to do the right thing, which is build additional housing for their family, their friends? So, what I hope is that my brother and my sister can move back home. Our first grandchild in the entire family lives in Seattle right now, because my brother can't afford to live here. If we had a bill like this passed, we could consider building a, an additional dwelling unit for my brother and his son, so that we can be together as a family. And so, please consider that what if. What if we don't do this right, right now? What, what if we wait a little bit longer, wait another year, and another year, and another year? And Ko'olaki, Ko'olaki is not what it's supposed to be. So I urge, I know this body has a tough, difficult decision. Um, I just came down from budget right upstairs to be with you guys, because it's really important for me to you guys to understand that the what is, is more imperative than the what ifs. And what is right now is that you have, uh, a decent draft bill right now that could positively affect our community right now. So thank you so much for considering my testimony, and I appreciate you guys working on this.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Anybody else wishing to testify on Zoom?
And just a quick note to the Councilmember, I'm pretty sure they'll excuse you from council if you wanna go be with your wife who's in labor. I'm pretty sure. You might, you might wanna ask, but thank you for your testimony.
You guys got any names? No? Last call, anyone else on Zoom? Okay, seeing, hearing nothing, Chair.
All right, uh, signal for the testimony. Housing Committee members, we'll go committee by committee here. Housing Committee members, any questions for the testifiers? Uh, yeah, Representative Onishi.
For Office of Planning.
Uh, Representative Onishi, Katia had to leave. Uh, I'm Mary Alice Evans, and I represent the Office of Planning.
Yep, thank you, Mary Alice, for being here. Um, question, you heard some testimony talking about the development along the rail. Uh, how much of that is going to be? Or, we already know there's a portion of the rail that's open. What portion of that contains, um, transit development housing?
The, to my understanding, the, uh, potential for affordable housing in the TOD zones is on state and county properties that, uh, will be for rental. Uh, and because the state and counties cannot sell public lands. So that, that represents a, a real resource and one that we strongly support. But it isn't the only answer. Uh, there are families that want to have a for-sale home. They want to, uh, be able to, uh, not to have to rent for the rest of their lives. So I do think that there's a need for other options in addition to TOD, uh, zoning.
Okay, but how much housing is going to be developed on the currently implemented rail?
I, I don't have, uh, an estimate for that. I will get it for you.
Okay, um, has the Office of Planning, um, analyzed this bill in regards to, um, how much potential? Well, first of all, let me back up. So we've heard testimony that there's about forty-five thousand plus housing, homes need, uh, housing units needed by twenty-thirty. Have you analyzed this bill to see how much of that this bill would satisfy?
Uh, no, Representative, and let me explain why. Uh, the potential for, uh, additional housing on this bill depends on individual decisions about current homeowners that may want to add units for their children, uh, or for their, uh, their parents. Uh, it also depends on, uh, so many other kinds of things that individual families might make a decision on. And I think it's probably difficult, it would be difficult for the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to make that kind of an estimate.
Okay, so you've also heard testimony about unintended, unintended consequences. So, if we pass this bill and it allows for counties to approve additional units on a particular residential property, does that residential property become more or less valuable?
Representative, I'm not an economist. Um, but I also believe that there are a lot of variables that go into that calculation as well. Interest rates, uh, you know, the location, specific location of a particular parcel. Uh, the, uh, amount of infrastructure that's available. Uh, so I think it would be difficult to create, to say, have a single answer for that. I think it's true that for some parcels, there might be increased value. I can't say that's true for all.
I mean, do we count on the State Office of Planning and the Department of Economic Development to look at these bills and project, help us project? Whether it's a good bill or a bad bill, I mean, you blanketly come out in support of this bill. But you don't know what the consequences might be, or what the opportunities.
What we do look at, Representative, is what's in the bill. And in the S D two, I see a lot of guardrails and a lot of deference to county home rule. on how they want to protect their neighborhoods, uh, through, uh, enforcing their own ordinances.
Okay.
So that's.
I, I would agree with you. We do give a lot of deference to the counties. But we've also heard testimony today how badly the counties have not provided housing. So how does this bill help then? If people are saying the counties are responsible for this housing crisis, but yet this bill gives them all the authority to approve or disapprove additional development?
Representative, I've seen a huge change, uh, in the many decades that I've worked in planning in Hawaii, at the county level and at the state level. And I do believe that the time is now that there is change, uh, in the way people are looking at the need for housing. And I think that exists at the county level.
But you don't know if this bill's gonna help or hurt.
I think it'll help.
You think it'll help? You don't have any data to show that it's gonna help? It's subjective.
Representative, data is what you look for in something that's already happened. Projections and estimates are what you make for what might happen in the future. And I'm telling you, there's so many variables that the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development can only look to the language of the bill and see in the SD two that there are the kind of guardrails that the counties will be able to use to ensure that the development proceeds in consistent with their voters' desires.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Alice.
Thank you.
I wanna, Chair.
Yeah, continue, please.
Um, the Kauai, uh, Planning Director, if he's still here on Zoom.
Kaina, are you still online? Oh, Hawaii, it's Hawaii, sorry.
No, Kauai.
Kauai. Kaina Hall, are you there?
You're not there?
Hold on, yes, sorry.
Hi, thank you for being here. Thanks for staying on. My question for you is, in regards to this bill, in regards to this bill, for example, increasing the number of units that, uh, can be built on a parcel in Kauai, has Kauai County Council acted on that already?
Um, through, when Kauai adopted the ADU law in the nineteen eighties, it effectively created to a certain degree by right, um, a, an ADU possibility. In two thousand and seventeen, when it adopted the ARU policy, that essentially allows for between one and two extra units. Um, so Kauai has taken some of that action already. I can say, um, depending on how, how you utilize subdivision and the ARU entitlement, in many situations, you, Kauai could already go after the two units by right.
So what restricts Kauai County from doing the things in this bill?
Kauai County can, can do the things in this bill and then in fact.
No, what restricts, what restricts Kauai County from currently doing the things that's located in this bill?
Kauai County can do some of these things, some of these things via ordinance as well.
So Kauai County has this ability already to implement what's in this bill?
Will have to do certain things either via ordinance or charter amendment.
Right, right. But you would still have to do it anyway.
None of this bill passed.
If this bill passes, you don't have to change any ordinances or, uh, draft some new legislation?
Uh, I believe somewhere could, would already be addressed. Other aspect could be done, possibly via administrative rule. But many of the aspects of the bill would, would essentially set the course for us. If we wanted to adopt additional pieces of legislation in constant with this bill, after it passes, should it pass, uh, we have that ability. But there's some provisions of the bill that would automatically just be implemented, um, by adopting the legislature and signature by the governor.
Okay, but Kauai County could take these portions of the bill and implement it yourself? By ordinance?
Or charter amendment.
Yeah, by permitting or by zoning or by rules?
Yes.
Okay, um, when you guys passed that ADU bill or ordinance, did that solve your housing crisis on Kauai?
I don't understand the question.
Well, do you currently have a housing crisis on Kauai?
We, as the rest of the state, is currently in a housing crisis, yes.
Well, I'm talking about Kauai specifically because you've said you guys have taken action in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, and, and I, as I stated during the House bill discussions, you know, the bill as we see it is not a panacea to the housing crisis. The ARU bill that we passed in two thousand seventeen is not a panacea to the housing crisis. And so, you know, asking me like, did the ARU bill solve the housing crisis? No, of course it didn't. Many lines have to be thrown into the water, many attempts, many strategies. And like the ARU bill that was adopted at County Council, here in Kauai, the department looks at this proposal as one of many strategies, many, many lines to throw in the water to address the housing crisis.
Well, when I look at this bill, it's basically allowing for more homes on, on individual parcels. Or it allows for a parcel to be zoned, well, um, subdivided into smaller parcels. Two things Kauai County can do right now. Is that correct?
It was, I'm sorry, is that a question?
Yeah. I asked, those two things Kauai County can do right now?
Either via ordinance or charter amendment.
Okay, okay. Chair, if I can have the Kauai County.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kaina. Zendo, are you, um, Planning Director Kern, are you there still?
Um, hi, this is Secretary Rochelle. He's in a meeting right now, but I can get him on shortly if you would maybe.
Okay, um.
Yeah, we'll come back, uh.
Yeah.
Rep, Anish, do you have other questions there?
Somebody else can.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back. If, uh, if, uh, when Director Kern comes back, maybe just, um, uh, turn your camera on so we can see. Okay, uh, Rep. Ayu has a question for Kaina Hall. Kaina, you still there?
I am.
Uh, um, there was some discussion about this, you know, that foreigners or, you know, out of state developers or out of state individuals would take advantage of that. Have you seen a huge influx of foreigners or out of staters into Kauai after you guys allowed the three units per lot?
That's an interesting question. Um, for the ADU proposal, when it went in the nineteen eighties, we actually saw a lot of, I'd say outsider speculation and investment as the ADU law was allowing agricultural lands. But when we look at the ADUs within our urban, um, districts, we found that only about twenty percent of those ADUs have been subject to a condominium property regime. And condominium property regime meaning it gets to be sold off. So only twenty percent of those were set up so they could be sold off. Now, whether or not they're sold to individual investors or, I'm sorry, outside investors, um, or local families, we couldn't assess that because of the fact that we have to look at each and every single one of them. But only twenty percent have been subjected to CPR, meaning eighty percent were not subjected to condominium property regimes and were not put on the, um, the available market. And then with the, um, ARUs, the, there, it was, is a built-in mechanism that prohibits CPR from happening. And so none of those that have been approved, built and, and set up, are, are sold off, uh, to the foreign market, if you will, or the outside market, if you will.
Okay. Do you, do you guys track as far as like owner occupant exemptions, uh, for real property tax? If you've seen an increase in like owner occupants or, or any of that?
I don't have that readily available. We can, we could pull the TMKs that have the ADUs and ARUs. I can say that the ARUs, the, much of what we're hearing colloquially is that they're billing it either for their aging parents or for their children. So they wouldn't necessarily be owner occupants, um, because they're billing it for other family members. But we could get that information for you folks on the next day or two.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, it's Director Kern. Our members, further questions? All right, Seena, we'll go to the other committees and we'll come back to you, Rep. Anish, when Director Kern is back on. Thanks, Kaina.
Uh, Waterline Committee members, are there any questions? Rep. Morikawa?
Thank you, Kaina, if you're still there. We're gonna pick on you today because your, your brains. Just, you know, the, um, when you have these ADUs though, it does affect your real property taxes if it's used for whatever cause.
Well, affects in, if you're renting it out to, um, at affordable rates, you'll, you can have one of the least amount of, let's say, tax increases. Um, but if you're sitting on a vacant one, then you'd have one of the highest residential taxes.
Right, so the real property taxes will adjust to accordingly to how you're using that extra dwelling, right?
Yeah, correct. And, and like I was saying earlier, um, you know, much of what we're hearing colloquially is that they're renting it out or they're providing it for existing, for family members, like young children or young adult children returning home or, or aging kapuna. And so in those situations, they actually qualify for the affordable housing rate, which is maybe the lowest, um, level residential taxes because they're not even really charging rent or they're charging a very low amount of rent for.
That, that's, that's correct, yes. So if you do rent it out higher, then it becomes like a, a business expense, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Waterline Committee members, any other question? I have a quick question for Mr. Osorio. Thank you very much for being here today. I think you're only, the only one representing the city and county of Honolulu here today.
Well, we got budget hearings as well, so a lot of them are tied up.
Appreciate you being here. I watched the City Council Committee hearing regarding the resolution that the council adopted opposing Senate Bill thirty-two oh two. And I was particularly interested in the discussion around the two ADUs. And it sounded to me, uh, that the city and county of Honolulu is looking at that and moving in that direction. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, so we have, I think it's Bill sixty-four that's dealing with a lot of those components. And I would say with the bill as it's drafted, the, the part that we have the least amount of concerns with is the actual three residential unit component, largely because that's where we're headed. I would say most of our concerns really revolve around the ability to come down to a two thousand square foot lot and, really the fact that it would throw out a lot of these long-term plans that have been put together with significant community input. So I, I would say that's, that's our biggest challenge. As far as the units, we're really headed that way anyway.
Got it. Um, since the city council is moving in the direction of adopting two ADUs, would you say that this is necessary for the city to continue that work?
I think the part in our discussions with the other counties that, that may provide some additional value in passing a bill uh, would really be around actually the subdivision component, so there's.
Sorry, just speaking for Honolulu.
Yeah, so for, for Honolulu, I, I don't know that this bill does much for us. But, you know, I can't speak for the other counties, but I think there's some parts that they like.
Just for Honolulu?
Yeah.
Okay, and the last question is your testimony, um, or actually, I should say, Council Chair Waters' testimony contains certain amendments and proposals. Is the Council Chair requesting these amendments on his personal behalf? Or is he doing it on behalf of the entire city council?
So because we were trying to flush that up with the, the resolution to basically oppose or support as an entire group, and we didn't really get into the details of, of amendments, at this point, he's just testifying as an individual, uh, member of the council.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate that. No further questions, Chair Asa?
Uh, questions of members of Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs? Seena, back to you, Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, I actually have a quick question for Mr. Osorio. Uh, reiterated again, Chair, I just want to say thank you for being here on behalf of, uh, County Honolulu. Is there anything in, does, does, uh, Bill sixty-four currently propose to allow two ADUs?
I believe two ADUs are, I think it's split between Ohana units and ADUs. And it, part of actually what the challenge with this bill is, is that there's such a difference in terminology across all the counties that it's, it doesn't really effectively account for all of them. But I would say that in, throughout most of the island, you can already kind of do two. And I think they were really considering and moving towards a third anyway. So that's the part where I think we're kind of moving towards that.
So just clear, through most island, you can do two, primary unit and ADU or Ohana, right? So that's the two? Or you're saying through most island, you can do primary plus?
You, the ones that I'm aware of, I, I know you can do the two. So it'd either be an accessory dwelling unit or an Ohana unit. In some cases, I think you can do both. So there, there are probably lots of areas where you can already do three. But we're doing a larger sort of cleanup on zoning and what's allowable in each of the zoning.
Okay, so I guess then back, for Bill sixty-four, does it allow for two ADUs or you're saying it's an ADU or an Ohana still?
I'd have to go back and check on the details of every single one of those. I think the, in our discussions, at least between myself and the Chair and with some of our other staff, I don't know that we'd be really uncomfortable with it just being straight ADUs. That, that part, obviously, the council hasn't fully weighed in on, so I wouldn't be able to speak for the council as a whole. But I think in general, the idea of three residential units on sort of our existing lot sizes is not that concerning to us.
Okay, and then, sorry, and then just for my full clarification then. So your folks, or Chair Waters', is primary concern with SB thirty-two oh two is the two thousand square foot minimum lot size and possible uncertainties around implementation powers of the county?
Yeah, most of it really is how that the three units, the allowing three units, and in conjunction with cutting lots down to two thousand square feet and what sort of that looks like. So, uh, just as in a personal example, so I live on a half acre lot with two houses. Under this, this bill, or under our proposed draft, we could, I'm pretty sure we could probably already put a third unit on there, but this would mandate it across the state and that would be fine. But on my lot, you're really talking about thirty and clo-. And if we had a few hundred more feet, thirty-three residential units on my one lot. And then we're seeing a lot of the, the lots sort of turnover in my neighborhood and so it could dramatically change sort of what the neighborhood looks like overnight.
Okay, thank you, Duncan.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, uh, is, uh, Zendo Kern? All right, Representative Anish, if you wanna ask your question, it looks like he's on.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Zendo, hi, thanks for being here. My question for you is, what is the current ordinances, rules that, um, allow for multiple, uh, resident dwellings on a single parcel?
Sure, so the main rule that we have right now in Hawaii County is the Ohana dwelling ordinance, which allows for an additional, essentially an additional dwelling unit, but it's very cumbersome in its nature. It's not necessarily a by right entitlement. It has increased setbacks, increased restrictions. Um, and that, we're actually working on legislation going through now to really open it up and try to be more consistent with, uh, for example, what this, uh, this Senate bill and the House bill have done. And so as it relates to any type of urban, outside of that, it's additional foreign dwellings, but I won't get into that because it's not really germane to this topic.
Yeah, so in reviewing your current county ordinances, what stops you from allowing for more than one Ohana zone, Ohana home?
Right now, the Ohana code is cumbersome in the sense that it requires increased setbacks.
Well, I understand that, but you said you were working on fixing that. But what would stop you from, from increasing the Ohana from one to two or three or four or five?
The county council at the end when they, when they.
So you need this bill passed because you can't get it past your own county council?
That's moving forward. I think this bill, honestly, I support this bill at another level because I think it creates parity across us, across the state. I think it actually moves forward more on a holistic approach that will then support the local legislation and move that portion forward, especially as it comes to the lot, the smaller lot sizes. So like I say, we're working on the ADU, that's gonna be coming up. I think this sets the tone and pushes that further and gives, again, consistency across the state.
So you would be okay with this bill passing? And Hawaii County would then have to allow parcels to be subdivided into 2,000 square foot lots?
The way that I, I understand it, they could, they could allow for it to be divided up into 2,000 square foot lots.
What do you mean it could?
Well, in, in the Irving core, to, to be able to do that, somebody still has to come in and want to do that and still have to have the infrastructure.
Yeah, but it would be beyond the county's control.
And in this case, for allowing that, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm very much a home rule guy when it's appropriate. But when it comes to tight density, additional dwelling units, I think approaching it from a state level is a good idea.
So you're okay with all over Hilo having lots downsized to 2,000 square feet?
I think based on the current infrastructure, it won't be able to happen all over Hilo. In the areas that the infrastructure supports it, I do think having small lot sizes like that would work.
So your reading is that in order for it to be downzoned, it has to be supported by infrastructure?
That's my understanding. Well, we can't, you know, when it comes to DOH, you have to have sewer system. If it's 10,000, if it's less than a 10,000 square foot lot, if our sewer system doesn't allow it, we can't allow for that to happen. Or by default, it won't happen because the offsite infrastructure costs for the development will be so great that it'll, that it just won't, it won't occur, similar with water.
Okay, so I don't, I don't, I am not understanding why Hawaii County is supporting it. Understanding our challenges on Hawaii Island with sewage and water. I mean, basically, we have almost no sewer lines and we're mostly septic tanks, or I'm sorry, not septic tanks, but cesspools, that if you were to build another unit on an existing parcel, you'd have to convert both homes to septic tanks and have two septic tanks.
That would be true in certain areas. When it comes to the smaller lot size, so I think we're looking at a couple of different areas here. We have the ADU conversation, which is allowing for additional dwelling units on existing lots. And then when we have the smaller lot size, that will basically be predicated on infrastructure. And in order to allow lots to be cost effective, you need to spread that infrastructure out per lot. Having the smaller lots works to spread that infrastructure cost out.
Well, on the ADUs, it says here in the bill, each dwelling unit shall comply with county development standards and there is sufficient infrastructure to support each dwelling unit. So to me, that's the same requirement that you're saying would be required for the reduction in lot sizes in subdividing.
For example, you know, on a 10,000 square foot lot with a septic system, you could get five bedrooms on that through DOH. But you wouldn't be able to sub, so you might be able to get two additional dwellings, say, the primary house being a three bedroom and the other two houses being a one bedroom. So that would get you three dwellings total on that 10,000 square foot lot. That same parcel, based on that infrastructure, I don't believe you'd be able to subdivide that. Because of.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you would be able to put it all on the same septic tank though.
Often, some, sometimes, so the septic system for a 10,000 square foot can support up to five bedrooms.
On a single dwelling?
It's gone both ways.
Because bedrooms, toilets, and kitchens are all different. So in a, a five bedroom, I believe the health department considers like three bathrooms and a kitchen. For one septic tank.
We've seen it go both ways, where we've seen it sometimes interpreted as one and we've seen it interpreted as the bedrooms. But septic systems are generally done by bedroom count, not kitchen count or bathroom counts. So we know that it is an, it is a potential option. And if it were to be adjusted to clarify that, that could be done in the administrative rules with DOH.
Okay, okay. How many of those 45,000 units that the DBED survey did is necessary on Hawaii Island?
I do not know the answer to that question right here, right now.
Okay, okay.
I can find out for you.
Okay, well, I mean, we have DBED here, so they would probably be able to answer it. Okay, thank you, Zendo. Appreciate you being there.
Thanks, Zendo, and thanks, Representative Oneishi. I do just want to clarify in the subdivision section, it does say that the Director of the County Agency, Responsible for Land Use, shall adopt rules pursuant to Chapter 91 to define the development standards and related infrastructure conditions to receive application approval. So it's, so they could reject for lack of infrastructure, certainly, for subdivisions. Thank you. Rep. Keela, you have a question? Oh.
Mr. Savio, in a well-respected amount of time, can you just please provide your solution? In respect to time, can you please provide your proposed solution to the measure?
It's real fast.
Okay, thank you.
If, if you want this to work, to benefit the local community, which is where you're getting all your support from, all you have to do is put in the requirement that any lot and any home will be resold at 80 to 100% of medium income forever. That stops the value from going up. It restricts it to where it was going to be a father selling to his son, his daughter, his nephew, his niece. It's going to keep it local, it'll keep it local pretty much forever. I tell you right now, look at Maui. They have the two ADUs, their land values went up. Maui's more unaffordable than it's ever been because of ADUs. As soon as they passed that ordinance, the land went up $100,000. The same thing's gonna happen here. If you don't put the restriction on the value, and we're talking in the model I just gave you, that house and lot in fee will sell for around $350,000 to $400,000, which is affordable. Affordable for local buyers, right? And if we're smart, we'll also put in, you got to be a resident and all the other restrictions that go with affordable housing. And now you've created a bill that works. And it protects the local guys from the developers and from the mainland buyers. Right now, you're just opening us up to assault. That's what you're doing. The mainland guys, they're gonna swoop in, they're gonna buy land, they're gonna develop, and we're gonna get the shaft again. You got to put the price restrictions in.
Thank you, Mr. Savio. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, back to Waterline.
Vice Chair Poy Poy.
Question for the Hawaii County Planning Director on Zoom? If you're still here. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kern, are you there? Zendo Kern?
Yes, I'm here. Apologize.
Thank you. Really quick, just to clarify something you said. One of, is one of the reasons that you're in support of this bill is to circumvent some of the county council processes and the planning commission processes and the different public processes that go along with that? Because have those been roadblocks that this bill would help you to circumvent?
So as a former planning commissioner, former planning commission chair, and as a former county council member, I don't really like the idea of circumventing. I do like the idea of parity across the board as it relates to land use in this way. I do think if the state can push it at a state level, it, it allows the counties to then start working on the finer details, like how are we gonna fund the infrastructure? As we know, there's been the YIMBY groups created because of the NIMBY groups. And when these types of topics come up in front of commissions and councils, oftentimes, it's a lot more NIMBYs than it is the YIMBYs. And I think when the state takes on something like this and sets it as policy across the board, I think it allows, it gives the councils some, some cover at that way. But not necess, not to cir, not to circumvent, but just to allow it to basically have that parity across the board and then for us at the county level to work on how we're gonna actually implement those components as well as fund infrastructure, because infrastructure is one of our biggest challenges.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify because you mentioned something earlier about, that kind of alluded to the council was a roadblock for you, so thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
A quick follow-up question, Mr. Kern. Thank you very much for being here today. I just wanted to highlight for you that in testimony, County Council Chair Heather Kimball from Hawaii Island submitted testimony in support. Have you had a discussion with her about moving forward on, on some of the measures in this, or some of the issues in this bill?
Yeah, her and I have talked and we're in, generally in agreement and we both support the measures. We've jointly worked on the ADU legislation that we have coming through together with our TAR legislation. So yeah, her and I are in alignment, especially when it comes to ADUs and density.
What is your ADU legislation?
Right now, we're working towards the, basically, we gutted our Ohana legislation and the ADU would create by right additional dwelling units on urban parcels. So it's very similar to these, to, to this Senate bill as well as the House bill, or excuse me, the House bill as well as the Senate bill.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm glad that you folks are having those conversations. Thank you.
We are. We're working on it really hard. Part of our, part of our challenge was really needing to make sure that our transient accommodation rentals were cleaned up as well. So we didn't get the ADUs just being used for transient accommodations. And so we have a package bill that's going through. And so obviously, the TAR side's getting a lot of challenging components to it. But the, the ADU is there and I think it's supported. And I say that the state legislation really bolsters that and supports it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Housing Committee members, further questions?
Yeah, I got a question. That's just for, Big Island or Maui, Kauai, I guess you can stay there. I read your testimony and support. It's a, it states strong support, but the thing that I keep scratching my head is, you guys have the power to do this right now. If you have such strong support, why don't you guys just go out and do it? Either for the county, the county of Hawaii or the county of Kauai?
Yeah, I, I think that's where things get a lot, a lot more complicated. I don't think everybody sees it the, the same way always. And so while the best of intention can go out there, things don't always go the way that, that you'd like it to. For example, I don't believe that there should be time conditions on rezonings. I think there should be performance conditions on those. Members of the council don't agree with that, so we're in a discussion and debate on that right now. And in order to move something forward, I think done at the state level, it really set that parity, I think it's really important because at the county level, it's not just as easy as getting it done, unfortunately.
Thank you for your passion. We'll go to Representative Keela.
Sorry, Hawaii County Planning Director. I have a question. So do you folks already deny permits right now that are not in line with some of your folks' requirements?
Yeah, if, if, if applications are submitted that aren't in alignment with our codes and rules, then we do deny those applications.
And would it be from, my understanding, this legislation, you folks would still exercise that authority?
The way that I understand it is that, as, as Rep. Evelyn said at the end of my last state, state, few statements ago, that there are the provisions in there for us to implement those components. So again, I think on the ADU side, it's very in alignment on the smaller lot sizes. I'm in alignment with that as well, but I believe that the legislation gives us the flexibility to have regulation where it's key, especially when it become, for public health and safety and key infrastructure.
So it's okay to say then publicly, in this legislation, you folks would still look to exercise that authority to deny permits that could be deemed insufficient?
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent is to allow for the small lot sizes so that the infrastructure can actually pencil. So yeah, we're not trying to do subdivisions with no infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Members, final questions? I see none from any of the committees. Thank you to all of the testifiers today on Zoom and in person. We will go to the next bill on our agenda here, which is SB 2948, SD2, relating to housing. This would allow by right residential uses in all commercial areas and require that the counties adopt adaptive reuse policies within their county codes. Vice Chair, are you for the testimony?
Okay, much shorter list. So Dean Mina Kamie, HHFDC. Thank you very much. Chris Cockfield, Democratic Party of Hawaii in support, in person. Nope, Evan Oi and Nia Pawai in support, in person.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Evan Oi, on behalf of Nia Pawai, we stand in strong support of this measure. We find that adaptive reuse is a, is a very useful tool to expedite our affordable housing needs and our housing needs here in Hawaii. And we did just recommend one amendment regarding the implementation date and moving that up to 2025. And that'll just help with existing projects and helping those get through the pipeline. So, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Evan. Next up is Trey Gordner, Hawaii Zoning Atlas in support, in person. Thank you very much. Next up is Sterling Higa, Housing Hawaii's Future in Support. Thank you. Ted Capello, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii. Thank you very much. Jacob, I wrote some pronunciations here. Rin Sekh, Hawaii Young Republicans. Oh, he left, okay.
He did it so good and he wasn't here to see it.
Stephanie Sakamoto, BI, BI Hawaii in support, in person, not here anymore. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, SB 2948, in person or on Zoom? Okay, oh, okay, Angela, go ahead.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of Cares, in strong support. So it's important to effectuate the Americans with Disabilities Act when adopting an adaptive reuse building code ordinance. And the act requires by statutory provision, a facilitation of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. The measure should specify minimum requirements for people with communication and mobility disabilities. So the ADA prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in public accommodations, communications, and access to state and local government programs and services. This creates equity for marginalized and stigmatized demographics who experience health disparities and health inequity, which results in inequitable access. So the act requires the state and the local governments, right, to provide reasonable accommodations to adhere to disability conditions. And so the housing crisis is magnified for people with disabilities as many units are not designed to be accessible. Those suffering from mobility and communication disability are suffering from the health disparity, right? So communication disability includes social communication disorders, which can result in developmentally disabled persons, right? They can't communicate effectively and are suffering perhaps from autism. They can't communicate effectively and are suffering perhaps from autism spectrum disorder and are experiencing difficulty when communicating with others. And the lack of ability to communicate at a normal functional level, their behavior is just not at a cognitively functional level and they have failed social interactions. And hence, the Americans with Disabilities Act provides the equity in the building parameters to help those who are just suffering from the health disparity and are developmentally disabled. So, yeah, we should provide equity to persons who are suffering from such debilitating conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Anyone else wishing to testify on this matter, SB 2948? Chair, seeing none.
Members, any questions? Testifiers. All right, seeing none, we are going to recess here for decision making. Reconvening the Joint Committee, Joint Committees on Housing, Committee on Waterland, and Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs for decision making. First item on the agenda for decision making is SB 3202, SD 2. First off, I just really want to thank everybody who came together here. And, and I think we had a really respectful dialogue on the issue. I know that this is a really sensitive subject to so many on both sides. And I just think everybody here was a model for good testimony, so I appreciate that. You know, and that said, I do think that this is the biggest issue that we face in the state right now. I think this is one of the biggest issues in front of us at the legislature. And so I appreciate, you know, everybody on this committee for working hard and everybody coming here with, with solutions on trying to get a way forward and find compromise. Certainly appreciate the hundreds of individuals and organizations that weighed in here. And, you know, not everyone agreed on that, but that's part of the process and that's okay. And I certainly heard the concerns from the Honolulu City Council with their resolution last week in opposition. And I appreciate the continued cooperation of Mayor Blangiarde's administration and DPP and all the other planning departments around the state. And I really appreciated Chair Waters and especially Duncan for being here today and his continued commitment to dialogue and to trying to find a pathway to make this bill stronger, even after the council passed the resolution in opposition. So I think Chair Waters' testimony is reflective of that effort that, you know, that we all agree on the need to move forward in some capacity, but we need a compromise to do that. So in the spirit of that compromise, my recommendation would be to amend the bill to wholly adopt the language of the Honolulu City Council Chair Waters as submitted in his testimony. His amendments remove the minimum lot size language, which I think were at the heart of a lot of the opposition. His amended language also retains the requirement to allow two ADUs on residential lots within the urban state land use district. And he provided further clarity to ensure that the counties have the full authority to continue to impose restrictions on the development of those units, such as size, design, et cetera, and to reject permits that do not comply with county standards. And under his language, the counties would have the continued authority to reject permit applications where there's insufficient infrastructure. I also recommend, related to covenants, that we add language clarifying that the covenant section, that nothing in that section shall apply to any contracts and agreements in existence as of the effective date of this ordinance. And in the covenant section, I'd further recommend adding the definition of residentially zoned lot to clarify that residentially zoned lot means a zoning lot in a county zoning district that is principally reserved for one and two-family detached dwellings. And would recommend that we replace the word adopted with recorded in the covenant section and tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and a defected date so that we continue this for future dialogue. That said, that recommendation does not have the consensus of the committee chairs. And so I will pass it to the other committee chairs if they have comments.
Thank you very much, Chair Evelyn. I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this measure. I also appreciate all the testifiers who came out today. And I agree that it was a very good discussion and it was very robust and as well as civil and respectful. So thank all of you very much. I appreciate the efforts on this legislation to try to come to some middle ground. I also want to say that upfront, that I support building more housing. I strongly support addressing our affordable housing crisis. I am just not sure and I'm not comfortable that the mandate for additional residential units or accessory dwelling units, as they're also known, is the right way to go in this form. I have a lot of empathy and compassion for those out there who are struggling with finding a home, finding an affordable home. I have members in my own family who personally struggled with this. So I know that it is a serious problem. The concerns that I have specifically on Section 1 of the ADUs mirror the concerns raised by the city and county of Honolulu in the resolution that they passed by the full council. I also understand that they are moving forward on, in this direction to add an additional dwelling unit on top of the one ADU, on top of the Ohana unit. And I also heard today from, similar from Hawaii County, that they're moving in this direction. And I heard from Planning Director Kaynahul that Kauai has also led the way in this movement. You know, I, I respect the county's autonomy in this area and they have said that they're moving in this direction. And I would like to give them the opportunity to do so. And if they are unable to do so for whatever reasons or challenges, I think that then it would be appropriate for this body to come back in the future, maybe even as early as next year, to revisit whether or not there needs to be a statewide mandate for additional dwelling units. But at this time, I don't think that this is fully ready. And so I'd like to ask for your consideration, Chair Evelyn, in taking out Section 1 of the bill.
So I just wanted to make it clear that this is a statewide bill. And one of the options that was presented to us was, well, let's just make this applicable to the neighbor islands and not Oahu. And I feel strongly that whatever we do on land use matters needs to be statewide. And so we need to move forward with something that has agreement among the three chairs, the three co-chairs here. And at this point, the agreement is to move forward with the recommendations as provided by the Housing Chair, except for that we'll take the recommendation from Water and Land Chair that we delete the section, portion of the bill regarding Section 1. And that's what we'll need in order to move forward. There is a defective effective date. It's going to go to a conference committee. We will continue these discussions. And I appreciate everyone's input on this, but I want to see this move forward. And this is what we can do to move it forward.
Thank you, Chair Yama and Chair Tarnas for your comments. Given your perspective here, I'm going to change my recommendation to recommend, instead of adopting Chair Waters' testimony, we will delete Part 1, Section 1, or sorry, Section 1, Part 1, which is the ADU section of the bill. We will retain Section 2, Part 1, which is the HOA section. And we'll have to amend the, sorry, the covenant section. We'll have to amend the covenant section because it references the ADU section, which no longer exists. So I recommend amending the covenant section to now reference that covenants and agreements cannot restrict density below that allowed by the county zoning codes. And then I will retain the amendments that I spoke about in addition to Chair Waters amendments. If you guys need further clarity on that, because now I know it got confusing, feel free to ask. But members, questions or concerns before I take the vote? Housing Committee members.
Yeah. I really do appreciate the amendments that the three chairs came up with. I think it makes the bill a heck of a lot stronger and more applicable at the statewide level. Although I am concerned that allowing for the right to subdivide is going to just drive up costs of land and of existing residents. I think that testimony was given on how we could restrict approval of these subdivisions and put in state restrictions as to its pricing or qualifications for purchase. That had been done in the past when the state used to sell land. We had those types of income restrictions and residential restrictions. I think that makes a lot of sense. With that being said, appreciate the amendments, but I'm still voting with reservations.
Okay, thank you, Representative Nishi. And I'm sorry, I misspoke or should have been more clear. So we will still be adopting the recommendation of Chair Waters just for the subdivision section, which deletes the minimum lot size component. Committee members, Housing Committee members, further questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair, for working on this measure. I'm voting yes. And I just want to acknowledge that this is one of the tougher issues. But my council member did vote against the resolution that was proposed in the city-county this, some last committee hearing for some of the same reasons why we've continued to support the measure. Due to some of the commentary raised, I think by Mr. Savio and others, if there's proposed language that could be used in the committee report to mention some of those concerns, because I think there is a point to be made, especially around speculation. And then I think two things. I am a little uncomfortable with the juxtaposition of some folks in their testimony to hide behind their opposition, fronting native Hawaiians. I think native Hawaiians have the right to speak for themselves. And I don't think anyone has to use that as their crutch. And to the comments that were made about someone living in a thousand-square-foot home with four people, I live in a thousand-square-foot home with six people. And that is the reality of people in Hawaii. So, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Keela. Housing Committee members, further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB 3202. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa is excused. Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Onishi.
Reservations.
Reservations. Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Waterland Committee members, same recommendations. Any questions? Comments? So just, just to clarify, we're on the same page. This is deleting the ADU section, deleting the minimum subdivision language, the minimum lot size. Did I capture that correctly, Chair Evelyn?
While retaining the subdivision, ministerial subdivision component.
Retaining the ministerial subdivision part and defecting the effective date, among other changes. Any questions? Comments?
I have a comment. Thank you. It's unrelated to the actual substance of the bill, but I just wanted to make a disclosure because due to the nature of the conversation and the testimony that a lot of you are relying upon in order to make this decision, that one of the testifiers, I'm not going to mention any names just to not single anybody out, but has in the past and currently, to my understanding, pays for a radio show for the Republican Caucus, of which I am a member of. But I have not participated due to potential ethical conflict. So I just wanted to put that on the record before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Souza. Waterland Committee members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on Senate Bill 3202, SD 2, with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganaden.
Aye.
Representative Hashem. Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa. Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Souza.
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee members, same recommendation. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SD 3202, SD 2, House Draft 1. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Evelyn.
Aye.
Representative Ganaden.
Aye.
Representative Holt. Representative Yama.
Aye.
Representative Iligan.
Aye.
Representative Kong. Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Souza.
Aye.
Recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is SB 2948, SD 2, related to housing. I recommend we move this forward, and I'm pretty sure we have consensus on the chairs on this one. But with a handful of amendments, tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, add the word multifamily to Page 2, Line 17, to clarify that multifamily residential uses shall be allowed. Instead of stating 220 square feet, state that the counties cannot require that units be larger than that allowed by the International Building Code. Remove the word "building" from Page 3, Line 8, to allow adaptive reuse under all county codes, not just the building code, and to defect the date for continued dialogue. Members, questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Members voting on SB 2948. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting the excused absences of Representative Kitagawa and Representative Matsumoto. Are there any members choosing to vote no or with reservations? Chair, seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Waterline Committee members, same recommendations. Discussion. Seeing none, Vice Chair, House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 2948, SD 2, with amendments. Noting all members as present, are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
For the Judiciary Hawaiian Affairs Committee members, same recommendation for Senate Bill 2948, SD 2, passing with amendments. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
All members being present, any members voting with reservations or no? Seeing none, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, members. Seeing no further business, this public hearing is now adjourned.